Penalty clause for not conforming like most of our ordinances.
You can be the mayor of that.
You could be the light police.
Yeah, I want my lumine.
But.
So the only thing that this addresses to is future development. As a developer comes in, we have a standard in place that they have to adhere to. And so it helps bring some uniformity if not everything develops at the same time or by the same developer.
Yeah, because I mean, my guess would be that if there are multiple developers, we're gonna have multiple lights. So this helps us maintain some consistency.
It gives us a standard to have for.
Right. Now, the other hope by having, you know, having this ordinance, by having this ordinance is that as those developments occur, hopefully out here at some point, will also be, it'll help us to be in a position to negotiate for new existing lights. For example, the lights in the city, I know we just replaced the ones here at the village. But the ones on the shores, I mean, those are so inadequate that they really don't serve much purpose.
Those piggyback.
Yeah, so that gives us an advantage there as well.
I really appreciate all the work put into this ad. I mean, this is, this is a nice way to develop a lighting standard, but use a free resource and expertise to help you bring a town to us. I mean, this has been great. I mean, it brought a ton of effort into it. Appreciate it.
And this is, you know, Adam and Cheryl have done educational things. This is like, you know, part of 10 boxes you gotta check or a dozen boxes, you know, in order to get this. It's, nobody else can get the standard. There's not gonna get that. Nobody's gonna put in this effort and.
Yeah, I also share that, you know, this, the outdoor ordinance is just one of the probably a dozen elements of an application for the designation. So, once we get this in place, and there are some moving parts that are going on at the same time, then we need, we'll need to document, formalize, an application to share with the international organization all those activities that we've done. And then it's based on their board to approve. And so hopefully maybe getting that done sometime around this year.
And one last thing. So one of the nice things about this is it ties, it tells us what we now need to do for ourselves at the city as we start doing more projects. So for instance, we're gonna talk about the concrete roads, but if we do build a, just your place for the mailbox to go, this is telling us, you don't just buy anything. You, we have to put up a, we don't wanna put up the wrong fixture and then turn around and rip it out six months later.
It's a standard for all new development.
And it's us included. So if we get a new archery, this is the design standards we have to put in that archery. And I think we have to take out one of that fluorescent lights. I think we got a 3 to 2 or something. Try to get the lumens down. You know, I mean, it's, so it's making us be, it's taking away degrees of freedom for us. It's making it actually easier.
It's also helping us make lighting choices that are efficient. So it actually, it's costing you in the long run.
Yeah, because part of it wasn't just what you shine in the sky, it's how you shine it down. Some of those glare out so bad, you can't see what you're trying to light below it.
Yep, that's true.
Okay, so this is just a very, so next month, what I wanna do is have everybody go through it. If they're, we'll kind of walk our way through it, not line by line, but we'll walk through sections. And if you have questions, let's be specific. That's kind of the goal next month. And we'll go from there. Okay. All right, thank you very much. All right, next up, we have a consideration, I'm sorry, next up, this discussion of the golf cart ordinance. This is Mr. West.
He's been here as long as it is.
Look at all those road. Look at the road.
Yeah, so anyway, what we were trying to do here was golf cart ordinance is, what, 10 years old, 15 years old? And there is a state golf cart ordinance, and we have to abide by that. So I was tasked with looking into that and see if they had changed anything. And is our ordinance matching up with theirs? Were we violating anything? Do we need to add anything, delete anything, anything like that? So this first section here, the sort of title section, you see a lot of that is gone. A lot of that is because it was just too wordy. A lot of it is because it references house bills that are now law, and so we don't need to reference that anymore. And it just, what we really needed that to say is just, this is an ordinance that is about golf carts. And it's got the legal stuff, providing a penalty, providing a review, et cetera. You can see throughout here, I took out references to those bills. I changed motorized cart. It talked about, instead of golf carts specifically, motorized carts and sort of gave a definition there. That did not really match up with the state. The state says golf carts. They have a separate section for ATVs, UTVs, and all that, which we'll get to later. So I tried to clean that up, sort of match what was at the state. If you go down a little bit, we've got a bunch of definitions that we didn't really need. One of the things that we're doing, actually down on page two, is there was a section that talked about registering golf carts. And I don't think we've ever done that. We've never enforced it. Probably nobody that has golf cart even know that they're supposed to do that. And if somebody came in to do it, we probably have no mechanism to actually register it. So he said, that's kind of silly, let's take that out. So that was one of the major things I could get. There is no, you don't have to register it. You do have to, in this, if you go down, so I took some of these definitions out because they were part of that. And we don't really need to define parking area and owner of the golf cart, things like that. I mean, you know, the owner was referenced in the part that was registering. So I took all that out. Section defining the limits was pretty much still in line with the state. You know, it's got a posted speed limit of 35 miles per hour or less. You can't want to go more than that.
What is 30 in there?
At the state law, defined 35, so that's what, I was trying to stick with the state. You can see section two came out, that was the registration section. And section three referred to transfer of ownership and so forth, which we don't care about. There is a section in the state code that required equipment, which is headlamps, tail lamps, reflectors, and parking rights. The edits that I made here were just pretty much to match it to the state. We've got the word operational in there, but that's not part of the state. I do think somewhere else it refers to, it has to be functioning, but.
You just have to have a headlight.
I think that's what the state, you made it.
That's exactly, I just did it with the state.
No, that makes it just an obvious loophole.
So we did get the states.
No, I get it, yes.
If you go a little further down, again, just changes to motorized to golf carts. And then I added section five, I guess it is, there. And this is straight up, this refers to the ATVs and UTVs. And we wanted this in there partly because we didn't want little kids running around on these ATVs that are, you know, eight years old in traffic and things like that. This is the state law, so even if we don't have this in there, they can't do that legally during the construction. So this section is just exactly straight out of the state code. I didn't make any edits to it.
So one edit I would suggest in this is the very first sentence says off-road vehicles, other than blah, 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 blah. All the other time in this thing, it says off-highway vehicles. So I would, it's obvious it's all the same thing. I would maybe change that first road to highway, because everything else says off-highway vehicle. It's just favoritization. Let me make one point, if I can jump in here. So under Texas law, golf carts are illegal to drive on the street. Unless a city has to create an ordinance that says they actually take action to say we allow golf carts.
Right, the transportation code states that they're illegal, but municipality has the right to make them legal as long as we follow their rules.
Right, now, ATVs, all those, everybody that's got the non-golf carts, those big things that morphed in all that, we have no authority, no ability, it doesn't work like golf carts. They're illegal across the board.
So we can't change that, it doesn't matter?
We have, the code doesn't say if you want to, that's not available. So we don't even, we can't, we have no ability to make, the only thing we can is a golf cart. That's it. And they define a golf cart to be something used on a golf course.
Yes, they are pretty narrow. It is a golf cart, not a quote motorized cart that allows for any of that. So then we added a section on severability, which I think is pretty standard to prevent it from inordinate accidentally being violated there. And let's see, what else did we change? The section, the next page after the signers, there was a form. So I got rid of that. It was to register it. So I guess we would have known, had to register it, so that was taken out. And that's pretty much it.
This is a discussion item.
Yeah, I have one question. I know there was a reference to driving age, but we really don't state a minimum age.
I don't think that's in the state.
It's not, definitely. So many, many years ago, Dave Gette wrote the first version. Dave put a lot of things in there, like you had 16, yeah, he put a lot, which he created on his own. About six months later, we came back and revised it, and we took a lot of that out at the city council. We made it a little bit easier. So it's, but Daryl's, I mean, my meaning of the state law, there is no such requirement in the state law. You can be four years old and not a golf cart, according to state.
Does it matter if it's gas or electric?
And there's no reference to any actions regarding breaking the law while driving one?
I didn't see anything like that in the state code. I, you would assume that you would have to follow the same laws, but there's nothing in there specifically about it. You know, you can't, you can't add to what they define. We're allowed to add to it as long as we don't violate anything else. So I mean, if you wanted to set, you know, rules that don't violate anything in the state transportation, you can.
Has there even been, ever been an accident with a golf cart? Or golf cart or ATV? It was a bad accident, but it wasn't a golf cart.
I remember that.
No, golf carts, it's, the only time I know of a golf cart issue, it was somebody that was using the car ditches to try and get some air. But the parents saw.
Trying to get some air with a golf cart.
Yeah, and we knew the parents were, so they were notified, and that golf cart privileges were revoked for that teenager. I tell you, all the golf carts I've seen out here, the kids, the teenager.
I've never seen.
They're incredibly courteous. They pull over, they stop, I mean, I've never, because they know that they're getting, it's like a privilege. They are incredibly nice and pull over and everything. I think that's.
Yeah, it's running too, when I jogged around in the summer when they were off school, and I'd wave and say hi, and I never saw anything of them acting like idiots or anything.
Yeah, I knew their body.
Again, this is just a discussion only item. So, Liz, you have any questions? Oh, great. All right, Daryl. We'll bring it up next month. We'll, so if we come back.
For discussion or?
To vote on it. So we'll go through that again, again, next time. Okay, so if you have any specific questions, bring it up for Daryl. All right, very good, thank you, Daryl. Sir? Our next up is consideration of the public services contract. We're not gonna vote on this tonight. I just want everybody to see the whole contract. There's a couple issues in there, which I think we wanna get some clarification on. And so, but I want everybody to see what our garbage contract looks like. Just to reiterate real quick, we're not going to, but if we approve this tonight, the rates don't start until January of 2020. We're renewing, oh, but our rates stay unchanged for another year. That's what we're gonna get by renovating. But we're on five-year cycles on 2025. That's who we've been doing. So Linda.
This is the contract that they've provided. If you read through it, you'll see the red lines where I made changes. A lot of the things that they've given us were right in line with what we asked for. One of the things that I was very surprised to see that they did not push back on at all was we've had a problem with getting sledgehauls in a timely manner. It takes a great deal of effort to get a sledgehalt down here. And we said, okay, if you don't get it done in 72 hours, we only pay half. And they included it in the contract without any questions or problems.
To get what, Nick?
A sledge, the dry cut when we process wastewater. It goes to the prime dead, it gets compressed down, now the solids then have to be hauled off. So the red lines are my changes. The things that are highlighted, review the red lines, look at, look at the highlighted things. Those are things that didn't make sense to me. I wasn't sure where council wanted to go. I didn't feel comfortable just making a change, adjusting a change. So specifically, the highlighted areas are areas that I need council correction on.
There also were sections that weren't included in our current contract?
No, highlighted areas are language that they included that I didn't know where council wanted to go. So I just highlighted it and said, I have a question about this. The red lines are things that I have either deleted or added on.
So like, for instance, you know, on some of the yellow stuff, it's hard to tell whether something is boilerplate. And we reserve the right to raise your rates if some event happens. Is that just an attorney writing it down, or is that likely to happen? You can't tell, just your first read. So we need to get better clarification. Because if you were to read through this, look at the yellows, we have a fixed rate contract unless one of 20 things happens, and then they can chase the late ones. Let's not fix that. If you can change it if any of these things all happen, then what's the point of having it fixed? That's kind of some of the thing, I think, you know, Linda's highlighting some of that, where council can see there's some oddities there. We don't know whether that's real or whether that's attorney boilerplate that isn't, you know, operational.
But to Ed's point, are these things that are highlighted, things that were in the past contract or the current contract that we are? Or is this something new that they kind of threw in here?
This contract is so dramatically different than the old contract that it was impossible to go and match it. The old contract is, yeah, it's at least 10 or 15 years old. And then we've done addendums to change some of the terms. There was just no way to match it. And the industry has made a lot of changes, specifically with recycling. There's been a lot of impact and changes on the recycling portion of the service that they provide. So it's just kind of an apples and oranges, and you can't start and prepare for that.
So typically, when you renew a garbage contract, is they just send over the addendum that says exhibit A, here are the new rates. And we've done that for like 12 or 15 years. We just, you know, we just take the addendum and say, here's the new rates.
For example, the part that's highlighted there, we're supposed to have a fixed rate contract. There are established dates of rate change and a fixed rate change that's going to take place. But this says that they can adjust it annually if they evaluate it. And I don't know what a recycling process charge is. I don't know where that comes from, and I don't know what the draw is at.
Yeah, how can they say on each anniversary of an effective date of disagreement that we can evaluate and change our contract?
But that's what I mean, it's like, it's a next to what's I changed.
We think this was just a temporary, and they haven't really kind of like tweaked it to what we asked for.
They've been working on this for months. And I'm sure that this is a contract they've got, they're the largest waste provider around. So I'm sure they've got it all over the other cities.
Our bits right here are contractors with Allied Waste Systems, but this republic services is an enormous contractor.
Second largest.
They're second to waste management. And what they're doing is they go in and they buy. So it's just a matter of time before the allied waste name is gone, it's our republic. So it's probably just some in-house stuff that, so that's where.
Some sort of merger happening.
Right, so one of the supporting.
And they've even taken over, like Louisville is served by waste management, and Allied has now taken that over. So waste management's on the way out. Allied may be getting bigger than them.
I'm kind of surprised to see, still see the allied being wrong.
So can we ask them just to take these kind of sections out?
You can ask for whatever you want.
Well, it's, I think, my guess is, this is a standard contract, because they have 87 cities in Texas, and the attorneys they draw, and that, you know, there's things to modify. So my guess is, that, the question is, that recycling, we reserve the right to, well, but it's not only if the world ends. The practical application is, it's only if, you know, recycling is now, you can't recycle anything. The market, you know, the world's ended. Or is it real? Like, if it was CWD, they'd be here every anniversary changing the number. They look at everything to say, if we can do it, we are doing it. I think we just need more clarity.
So this entire paragraph, if you read through it and parse it and try to figure out what they're saying, there's just no clarity as to what, when they might do it, or what their thought process is.
Well, let me, let me tell you, so when they, when they first showed up months ago, they asked us, do you want us to bill your citizens' life all different components? Your trash service is this much, and the fuel is this much, and recycling is like.
Like your phone bill or something?
Yeah, we don't want a phone bill. Just, how much is the garbage? $19, they just tell us the 19. It's irrelevant to us whether that 19 is made up of 62 cents, because recycling is now a loss rather than a gain. We don't need to know that. So some of this language has got these things in there, but our rate doesn't have that. The rate they're quoting us doesn't have a recycling component in it. We have a flat fee. So the question to me to them is, is this not operative? Because our bill is flat. We're not, we didn't ask for the à la cart numbers. And if they said, yeah, it's not operational the way we're billing the rate, then that's, you know, we need more information. Is there more? I just wanna, Chris, we just wanna scroll.
I feel like that was the bulk of it, wasn't it?
And then the fees on the back, if you go to the last exhibit, this is just some labor laws that says.
Most of the things that I had questions about, that I was drawing their attention to, were associated with recycling. And the things that seemed like they were going to be able to adjust the rate without us, without council, we never say anything. In the previous contract, they could not increase the rate without council approval. In this contract, they said they would increase the rate upon notification. So I changed that back to council approval.
So on the. Is there, come on, it's actually over here. So it's in the very front, you see up the very, the top row, the smaller font, you know, 2050 for the first, remember, it doesn't start for a year. So that's their same cart stuff, landfill, you know, we don't use the landfill personally, but that 730 is our sledge removals. And then we get four, I think they made a mistake last year, we usually gave us eight, right? But we get, we get four of those big containers for free. We've always had four for free.
No, we're always at eight, they're free.
Yeah, well, the contracts always said four, but we got eight, so we didn't say no.
Does everyone in town have the two blue carts and the one green?
They have three carts.
They have three carts.
Some have four, but I mean, a new resident comes in, I ask them, do you want two green, how are you, you want two greens and a blue, or three blues? How, what do you want? Most people take two greens and a blue.
Yeah, I fill up my green when we're passed.
Because remember, those are every other week, too. But this is, this is the, anyway, this is the current rate schedule, and I believe those are the numbers we've talked about. Fixed for two years, which is three years from now, and then fixed for the remainder of the contract. I think that's what it was. Up until, oh, it's every year, until the year five. Okay? So I think, I think the takeaway from this is we need to get some more clarity. Linda, we'll talk to them about the yellow areas. I'd like to approve this sooner rather than later, but obviously, you know, it's a year in advance, so.
So we don't have a deadline for approving?
No, it's just basically, you know, the kind of the unwritten thing is, we're doing it a year early, and so because of that, they're not adjusting our rate for another year. So they don't be, you know, like, three years since the rate, four years since the rate's actually been adjusted at all. So, but if, if everything looks good, then let's just get it off our plate and move on.
I agree.
We got lighting ones, do you? Okay, all right, so no vote on that, we'll bring that up next time. Number five, discussion of concrete roads. Okay, so, let's talk about concrete roads. So one of the things I wanna do here is, we're gonna talk about concrete roads a lot. So there's too much to talk about if I just said, I'm gonna educate you on the whole thing, you know, in one council meeting. We'll be here till midnight, and you'll soak up about 10%. So what I wanna do is, let's just kind of start with basic stuff to get everybody on board. So back when we did the roads in 2013, we started talking in February of 2013, having our discussions about, can we really do this thing? What kind of money are we talking about? You know, financing, kind of a high level to say, it was like more of a feasibility. Is it even feasible for little old Lincoln Village to pull this off? And we started those discussions in February. So in August is when we had the contract from the engineers to go ahead and do the design work, set it out to bid, handle all of that, right up to awarding the contract and selling the bond. So we started that February. In August is when we signed that contract, and that's when we committed to go. Now, in August, what we did there, what we committed to do was the engineering and send it out to bid. But you're never committed to actually accepting bids. You could go to that point, and the bid's committed, and you say, when are you doing it? You don't have to keep going, you just stop and say, now. So the engineers differ than when you actually sell the bond. Once you sell the bonds, you're committed. But what happens is, the engineer, what we'll do, and we have this now, is before August, so in February and March, the engineers gave us a probable construction cost. They estimated what the roads would cost. As part of our, do we really wanna do this discussions, what's the number? And they estimated it would be 1.6 million. That was their estimate back in February. It came in at 1,591,000, off by 9,000. So these guesses at the beginning are pretty accurate. They're using the most recent projects and that kind of stuff. So again, that happens before you even get the engineers to do any engineering work. You're kind of doing the feasibility. Can we do this? Here's the numbers. You know, it's a process where you get comfortable, and then you kind of go to the next step. Okay, so that's how it evolved. And so in August, we said go. And in April is when the bids were in, the numbers came in, where we expected them to be, and that's. And that night, we accepted the bid and we sold the bonds. And that starts. It took them about a month to mobilize to get every, all the equipment here and get ready and actually, so in June is when the first piece of road got peeled back. And it took about, about nine months for them to do this side town. It was scheduled for eight months, we had some rain, okay, so about nine months. Okay? So that's, that's kind of the, the idea, the, the caliber a little bit. It came in at about almost $200 a foot. That was our, now, that right there is 7,000, about 7,900 feet. The rest of the town is 14,500, so it's almost twice as much. That's the size of the project we're looking at. Okay? So that's a rough idea based on our past experience as to, as to where we're going. I have the first round of cost data, Daryl and I, yesterday with the engineers, most of the night. And we're going to revise those numbers and I'll bring you the estimates coming up, not tonight. Again, today, everybody, this is the ballpark we're in, let's talk about it. You know, because everything feeds on the last step. If we hit the abort button, then no need to talk about the next step. Okay, so I want to get everybody on step, everybody lockstep. All right, here's some issues that we have to talk about before we even get there. So let me quickly run through these. Green Meadow, everybody knows where Green Meadow is, right? That's the street you cross from the mailboxes. That nobody lives on, it's kind of a gravel road, it's about 11 feet wide. Nobody lives on it.
There's one house over there, isn't there?
At the very end, but they don't show on.
Yeah, there's one.
So.
The front of the house is Meadow, Green Meadow.
Exactly, right. But the garage is, that's why we concreted to their house and started. So for instance, you know, should we do Green Meadow? Yes, of course we should do every street, but. Do we, you know, that's a question. That is actually a degree of freedom and, and I might bring to you something which says, look, let's leave that out and when the first developer comes in, we just make a deal with them when they're putting in their road to do that. I'm just throwing that out, I'm not saying we have to decide on that, but there's options. That road's not necessarily a given that we have to do that road, nobody lives on it. We'll talk about it. Meadow Lake, if we could pull up an arrow, which we can't because the internet's down. If everybody were to drive to Meadow Lake and High Ridge, that were Dorothy Bridge where Ray, Ray Duff used to live, there is no cul-de-sac there. It's shaped like a teardrop, they never put the cul-de-sac in. The trees in their front yards are in the cul-de-sac because they never put it in. What are we going to do? I think we can't put a cul, we're going to talk to fire department to see if it can be a dead end.
I think the cul-de-sac, you know, would wipe out trees and be more expensive.
A cul-de-sac is a hundred-foot diameter.